Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We want to have a motion for the approved minutes of April 4th, 2018.
Mr. Plakel?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm reporting on a couple approvals I made on your behalf on the authority of Brandon Hing on April 12th for the county home approved hiring Sarah Knight to the position of part-time attendant number 1504-1 to be effective April 12th, 2018 at the rate of 12.4 per hour with a one-year probationary period. This offer's employment is contingent upon successful completion of the required pre-employment conditions. Also on the date approved the reclassification Andrea Moss from part-time attendant to full-time attendant number 1504 to be effective April 8th, 2018 at her current rate of $11.81 per hour with no probationary period. And then yesterday on the 16th, again for the county home, approved the reclassification of William Ranker from part-time attendant to full-time attendant number 1504 to be effective April 16th, 2018 at his current rate of $11.81 per hour with no probationary period.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so today's financials include an appropriations transfer from the commissioner's office to increase the appropriations in the maintenance department's utility accounts for assumption of the county home utility bill payments. Cash transfers include one from various funds for the March Windstream Bill and a cash transfer from the commissioners to the law library to increase funds available for renewed library services. Incumbrances include an increase to an incumbent from JFS for Beach Brook, George Jr., and safely home residential service facilities. Contract encumbrance from the Department on Aging to Shraff Thomas Law LLC for senior legal services, and this replaced a closed encumbrance for Shraff King Law Firm. A travel request from the auditor for the OAPT Annual Public Finance Officers Training Program in Sandusky. Travel request from common police for the Ohio Community Corrections Association Annual Conference in Columbus. Travel request from JFS to attend the EDMS Forums Design Workshop in Dublin. Travel request from the Juvenile Court to attend the 2018 Two Days in May Conference on Victim Assistance in Columbus. Travel requests from the Public Defender to attend the Ohio Annual Juvenile Defender Leadership Summit in Columbus. And finally, travel requests from Water Resources to attend the Ohio EPA Waste Water Collections Operator Class 1 Exam in Columbus. Among the vouchers are $50,325.60 from the commissioner's office to SCOTC-MANOTI for investigative accounting services rendered during December of 2017 and January of 2018. $65,673.31 from the commissioner's office to Ohio State University for the county's 2018 second quarter share of the university's extension services. And $29,185 from JFS to Great Lakes Trucking Driving School for the CDL training. And finally, revenue certification for the law library to recognize additional revenues in their transfers and accounts.
So I heard you say Shraff and King Law Firm?
Yeah, that was the one that they, the law firm changed its name, so they had to close the one encumbrance and then just open up a new one.
So on here it says Shraff and Thomas, is that just a misprint?
Shraff and King was the old one. Shraff and Thomas is the new one.
New one, okay. And they just changed their names?
Correct. Yeah, so it wasn't, there wasn't an increase in encumbrance amounts, it was just they closed one and opened a new one.
And then the voucher for SCOTC-MANOTI, now is that for just one month?
No, that's for two. That's for December of 2017 and January of 2018.
Oh, two months, okay.
Yeah. And those were the then and nows, the then and now encumbrances that we approved last week because we did not have an encumbrance open to pay those at the time.
When did the invoice show up for that? Last, was it last week?
Was it, it was probably a few weeks ago.
We had the coverage replaced.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was up to...
Coming to a little bit of a slowdown now?
We have not received anything for February yet. We have an encumbrance open to cover anything else that comes in. I think we opened it up for like $10,000, but we haven't seen anything from them yet.
I'll see if I can get an update. I think I skipped those suggesting that we could...
You know, at some point it'd be good to put a tally together of the entire picture here where we're at, you know, to see.
We ought to be able to get a forecast on where we're going. We don't want this to be like the whole Mueller thing and it just open-ended and it just goes on and on and on.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
So the commissioner's office is requesting a board approval next year resolution 1858, itemizing the financials beginning April 17th, 2018.
Second.
Mr. Plakel?
Yes. Thanks, Adrian.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to abstain on the SCOTC just as far as the potential, so.
Okay.
I'm staying on that part of it, but approve everything else.
Okay.
Morning.
Did you want to talk to John King?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we'll take him, take him first and then we'll be able to bring him up there. Sounds good.
Okay.
Just here for a request for the board to award a cover replacement on Fairmont Road onto Woodford Excavating LLC. Woodford is a first-time bidder in the, in Javi County, so we've, we received some requests and information and they complied and found to be acceptable. So we're asking the commissioner to award the project to Woodford in the amount of $123,000.
Is that just west of Javi? Is that the one there?
No, it's just the one to Sperry.
Oh, the one right by Sperry?
Yeah, the big one right under Sperry. It's just west of Sperry. So it's right on the Newberry Russell Town.
Oh, there, okay.
Woodford, where are they from?
Leavittsburg, down there in Arkansas.
Okay.
They just completed, actually have been working on a project in the village of Burton too, so they did a waterline project for Burton.
Our engineer's office is requesting the board award the bid to Woodford Excavating LLC for the Fairmont Road, road culvert replacement structure 16-04.51 in Newberry Township in the amount of $123,000 as they represent the laws and that's it.
Second. Yes.
Thank you. Actually, if we can just, I'm going to have John, John King come up from Ohio Division of Foresting.
Foresting.
Addressing you guys? Yeah, that's fine, sure.
Hi, Jeff.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
It's kind of not looking like spring yet out there, is it?
No, it's not. And I've got a meeting tomorrow with people who are worried about global warming, so.
Yeah.
It's going to be interesting.
I hate it when it gets warm up there.
Anyway, you guys had requested that I update you on what the city of Akron is doing with their lands now, so I wanted to give you a background of what's transpired. It's been at least a couple of years ago when I was contacted after they had contacted OSU Extension Forestry, who then gave them my number. They, the city of Akron watershed coordinators and I met at my property, which is surrounded by theirs. And they had been given the directive by their mayor to look at the lands they own and to see if they're managing it correctly or not. Not much has been done on their lands in the way of forest management for probably 25 years at least. So they initially were going to hire a consultant from Oregon, and I talked them out of that, said we have plenty of people around here who know what they're doing and have walked them through the process of, you know, assessing what they own and getting them in touch with local foresters, setting a plan in place parcel by parcel. Right now, we have, we have assisted them with their first, what we're calling a pilot timber sale. Initially, my advice to the consulting forester was, let's see, you know, they had asked to do a large plan for a big amount of acreage, and I said, no, let's scale that back, do a small amount first, see if you can get this through the internal, you know, the city process and the people that, internally within the city of Akron. So he did that, and he did everything I asked him to do. Now we're doing the first pilot timber sale, again, to see if it can get through the internal city process, not really contemplating that there would be a lot of interest from external sources. You know, basically, it's, you know, it's private land in a different county, so we wanted to get it through their internal system first. But we are currently, the Division of Forestry, the direction of our chief, wants to make sure that they are getting good advice as they move forward with their land management. So we are in the process of developing a memorandum of understanding with the city of Akron, or someone from the Division of Forestry, and more than likely be myself, as the district manager of this side of the state. I will be assisting them with oversight on not only where they harvest, how they implement harvest, but we also have a best management practice specialist who works with the soil and water issues that may or may not arrive, just to make sure we're planning everything correctly. So that's kind of where we are right now. They've sold their first sale. They're waiting on conditions to be right before they can come in and do the harvest. But that's kind of where we are.
So let me ask you a question. You know, we, the county doesn't get a dime from the city of Akron as far as, you know, it's, it's a non, you know, it's owned by them and they don't pay a penny of taxes.
That's not my understanding.
They pay some.
They have, my understanding, and you would have to talk to the audit office about this, I've talked with them, approximately 370 parcels that they own in Javga County. Some are taxed at full rate. They don't even, they haven't assessed very well what they're paying on each parcel. They're like most city entities. They don't have a lot of employees exploring this stuff. So what my understanding is, some of the parcels are taxed at the regular rate, some are on CAUV if they're being farmed. Some have other exemptions due to the wetland significance, and I don't even know what those rates are.
Right.
But they haven't really cleaned that all up yet.
But in your experience in this scenario, have you ever seen it where, in a, you know, they're the largest land bearer in our county, you know, and have you ever seen that where there's some form of a shared interest in the sense of, or is it pretty much everything they get, they get?
As far as?
Dollars for the sale of the timber?
I've not seen, I actually don't know of any municipalities that really own this much ground. They bought it, you know, they bought this back when the Kaidoga River was catching fire and there was no EPA in the early 1900s for the most part, to the best of my knowledge. So I understand why they bought it at that time. Now they've got this large land holding that they've got to maintain. I don't know how badly they need it this much, so I can understand why they're not letting their timber fall over. And their thought, they told me what they wanted to do was utilize the monetary income from the timber to reinvest in other issues they've got on the land.
I see.
You know, they've got a lot of thinning problems, they've got invasive species control that they would like to complete. There's a lot of, a lot of things that they could do. Quite a bit of their land is either in the wetland, which you won't do much with manager, you know, forest management with. But there's a lot of stands that are, that are younger, that need some, what we call pre-commercial work, that is just labor intensive and it costs money to do. So instead of letting their larger stands fall down, they're utilizing them some, reinvesting that in other forest management ventures.
I see.
That's, we'll see where the money goes, but that's what I've been directing.
And so, as far as just the, all the calls that we're basically been getting, you know, to try to extinguish some of the rumors is that, you know, large, you know, large-scale developments, clear cutting, I mean, at this point in time, it's mainly, it's primarily select cut is what is being done.
Yeah, mostly what I call improvement cuts. I don't like, select cutting has been a term that's been abused for years, very misunderstood. You know, the bottom line is, up here in the Northeast, we have some of the worst harvesting practices going on in the state, the absolute worst. And it's because the landowners don't know where to go and what to do. And when it, when someone's knocking on the door and putting money in front of them, it is, it's just, it's notorious up here what's going on. So the general public doesn't really, you know, they haven't seen well-managed sales. They're seeing a lot of very poorly managed sales or completely unmanaged sales, because that's 90% of what's done up here. Not just here, it's statewide, but up here it's worse.
Let me ask you, John, you know, that, to agree that we've had a flood of, you know, people concerned about this, and I think there's a lot of misinformation going around.
There is.
What are you guys doing at the Division of Forestry with the city of Akron to, you know, get out in front of that and explain exactly what the purpose of doing this is?
Well, again, we haven't, we're going to develop this MOU. We're in that process right now. The current sale that, you know, has been sold, the first one we're going to do, again, that one was designed as a small sale. Let's get it to the city, the city of Akron personnel and their political system to see if it's palatable to them before we're worried about others.
I see.
You know, they've got, they've got some misinformation on their, on their website that could be better. We haven't, I haven't worked with them yet on clarifying that verbiage. So there are several things.
I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly, what you're, what you're trying to achieve, you know, what the thing we want to try and avoid, I guess, is, you know, something similar to what happened out in Claritin, right?
Oh, yes. Yes, that's exactly the kind of thing we're trying to avoid completely.
Right.
Huge mistake.
You know, I think somebody came in and was waving a few dollars under their nose and they jumped, right?
Right.
And next thing you know, they have a mess, you know?
This is very common. It's common among resource professionals. It's common even internally somewhat within our division, Division of Wildlife. Very few people really understand the economics of forestry, you know, and what, what can be done, what the options are. And that's why people make such mistakes. And they, they just don't, they don't understand it. They don't understand what they're growing, how much value it has or doesn't have, how much impact a management decision makes on that resource. It's one of the most underutilized resources we have as far as grown in the field. Operators, you know, Ohio is a center for domestic furniture production in the United States now. We have a huge forest products industry. It's a $26 billion a year industry, but the natural resource that we're growing is not being harvested correctly in many, many situations, a high percentage of the situations. There are very few private consulting foresters working in the field. The ones that are extremely busy, and you will not see them advertising anywhere, and there just aren't a lot of guys that understand that that work is out there.
What's the lack of information, is it just due to the lack of funding?
Partly, partly on our part, yes. I mean, it's really, it's really the Division of Forestry's job to get that information out there, but the universities aren't teaching it. And that's another thing we're trying to work with them on. We are, also, some of our internal programs, the property tax reduction programs in general, eat up a lot of our time. So we're obligated by law to address those things as a priority right now and by policy. So that keeps us from spending a lot of time with the public in the field. We do a lot of one-on-one visits, but we don't do nearly enough larger-scale visits. And that's one reason why, you know, I decided to help with the city of Akron issue because it's a large landowner, very, you know, we can get information out about all the mistakes people are making to, you know, at least step back for a minute and say, hey, what should I be doing with this resource when someone's knocking on their door?
Just one last question, and then, you know, I've heard, I haven't seen exactly where they're planning on doing these cuts, but there's been some talk of, you know, it's close to the water and it's going to affect the water and it's going to affect people's wells, I've heard that. I've heard all kinds of different things. But, you know, as far as that Ladoo Reservoir, how close are you, is the planned cut to that?
It's, it's very near the one end, the upper end of it, the shallower end of it. But, you know, we're just reducing, I don't want to get into forestry terms, we're just reducing the stocking level some by targeting trees that have problems, either over mature, structurally defective, just not the best trees. It's going to be very well stocked after the cut.
Right.
And those trees are going to grow, the trees that are left are going to grow better. That's the design of an improvement cut. Most people don't realize, it takes 100 to, or it takes 80 to 120 years to get a crop to salt timber size class. Once you get it there, you can keep it there, but you've got to be conservative in your marking.
That's right.
And typically, your harvesting interval is every 15 to 20 years, but you're only taking three to 10 stems per acre out. And you're targeting those trees that you might lose in that 20-year window to the next cut. There's a, there's a method to it that most people don't, aren't aware of.
Sure.
And most people aren't employing.
No, we appreciate what you're doing and we appreciate you coming in too, because I think that it's, it's encouraging to know that, that they're doing, you know, having, you know, someone with your knowledge to be, you know, on board with this, to oversee something like this. It's a big plus for us.
It's going to, it's, I feel it's going to be important if they set an example so other people can see how this is done right. It's just a topic that's not very well understood.
Well, it's unfortunate because oftentimes the public overreaction because of seeing bad practices and all that kind of stuff. It's natural, it's normal.
It is.
And so, you know, their overreaction actually prevents us from doing the right thing, which is what you guys are doing and what Akron is doing. So it's good that you come in and talk about that. It'd be nice if we got some press on that in a positive way rather than a negative way, because none of us want to do harm to the timbering, the property and the timbering activity, and we all want to see that approved. You gave an excellent presentation the other day to the Farm Bureau, and, you know, there's a lot of property owners in that room at the Farm Bureau, and they were all appreciative of what you're talking about, because even they don't really understand proper forestry management, that kind of stuff.
No, and it's not a terribly complicated process. It's not a terribly complicated topic to learn. We just aren't doing a great job of getting to the masses. There's, you know, there's probably 5,000 property owners per county that are, that own forest land or manage a whole amount of forest land. And most of us cover three to nine counties. So it's very difficult to, you know, to get out to that many people as they need assistance.
So what would you recommend today if a, if a landowner wanted to take a look at their property, would they contact your department first? Is that the?
They, yes. In particular, the people who are being pressured to sell, those we are, those cases we are prioritizing, because those landowners are going to make a decision, good or bad, and most of the time it's going to be a bad decision. So we do prioritize those landowners that really are being pressured to cut or want to cut or need to cut, whatever the case may be. We try to schedule them as quickly as we can. That's our priority. But unfortunately, we are delayed a lot by having to help with the property tax reduction programs. Those really eat up a lot of time.
Right.
So, that's what's going on in a nutshell.
I appreciate you coming in today and keeping us up to date, you know?
No problem.
And let us know how it's continuing. Now, when, when would you start? The spring or the summer?
It depends on when the weather is fit.
Okay.
I mean, you don't, the guys have to do, they're obligated by contract to do reclamation of everything. You don't want them damaging trees. There's costs if they damage. So when the, when the soil conditions aren't conducive to harvesting, the guys can't work in the woods.
I see.
It's like this whole spring. A lot of these guys don't work all that much. If they're under contract by a forester, most foresters won't let them in the woods at this time of year, you know?
It's too bad.
Unless it's, unless it dries. So it's all depending on, you know, typically in a contract, once a buyer commits to a price, he puts down a deposit, he's got 12 months to go get it, depending on the conditions on the ground. And the forester has oversight of when he goes in, you know, and whether he's, if he's causing some damage, the forester will say, no, we've got to wait.
Are they shooting up the Indiana bats right now to make sure they're not in there?
Well, that's, that rule actually only applies on lands that were acquired using federal funds. So that's, now, some outfits, like the pipelines and stuff, would just want to avoid controversy, so they'll, and quite frankly, that isn't, that backfires like a lot of federal rules. We've got guys in the woods right now that shouldn't be, trying to get everything out by, you know, prior to the, the window. And they shouldn't be in there because they're doing more damage than they're helping.
I see.
So that stuff a lot of times backfires.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Morning.
You're back.
Back.
Back to wonderful weather. It's probably 80 and sunny in Colorado, right?
Seventy, yeah.
He's going to brought the sun back.
Yeah. Okay.
The first thing we've got is the, we've put in for the grant for the hearing safe helmets or ballistic helmets that have hearing protection in them as well as the radios will be able to transmit into them for the SWAT team. So if there's a shot that goes off, it muffles or immediately protects our hearing. And it's only a 10% match, so we're getting these helmets for, $2,500 helmets for $250 a piece roughly.
How many can we buy?
Four.
Can we get more?
I think that's all the grant. We only have four guys assigned to SWAT, so.
Okay.
We may, I don't know, if we're going to get a fifth one, so we have spare.
I mean, for that kind of money, you know? Are they sized? Do you got to get them sized up for certain guys?
Can you get the helmet for $250?
Yeah, small, medium, large.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Kind of universal.
It's not like, it's not like Velcro or something, you know?
The special one, the special one.
Okay.
The sheriff's office is requesting a board approval, and I ask for the Office of Criminal Justice to grant a safe helmet, grant 2017 GGLE 5108, pre-award conditions of standard assurance forms, in the amount of $9,900. $8,910 from OCJS and $990 will account and match this grant for the period February 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Mr. Plakel?
Yes.
The next one's just a renewal for the housing of prisoners for sure.
The sheriff's office is requesting a board approval, and I ask for the agreement for boarding of a prisoner's bond between the county and board commissioners and the village of Sugar and Falls.
Second.
Mr. Plakel?
Yes. All right. Have a good day. Thanks, guys.
Did you guys get to skip all those helmets?
Yeah.
Did they ever hear you need them, so I can?
Yeah, they did.
Pump up the...
They didn't, you didn't hear them.
Is fish sale made to me?
Frozen fish sale.
Frozen fish sale.
Is it fish sale today?
It's free, what? It truly is a fish sale.
My daughter is out there freezing her butt off.
No kidding?
What kind of fish are you selling?
Fingerling fish to sock pond, not for eating now.
Like tilapia?
Bluegill bass.
No, you know what?
You clearly didn't see us.
I did.
You can do that spring and pond, even though this may not really be spring.
Let me ask you, have you, real quick, have you had any calls related to the NACR?
Numerous.
Okay. Are you working with them in any way?
Yes, we've been trying to do what we can. I believe too, people, concerned people were at a board meeting the last, last board meeting or the one before.
Okay.
And expressed the concern and expressed what we, you know, where our limitations are. And we inspect the sites for just best management practices, not for the logging components, like what he was speaking of.
Right.
And it's a complaint-driven process. It is not a, it's kind of, it's not like a lot of other things that we do on the land around here. There isn't a permit required.
Okay.
So it's not like we have to monitor that. But if there's a complaint, we have to make sure that their best management practices are being followed on the site. And this doesn't mean that there's going to be crystal clear water leaving the site. That's what I always say, you know? Following best management practices does not mean it's clear water. It can be cloudy water. Following best management practices does not mean it's clear water. It can be cloudy water. But are they using the practices that they're supposed to? And that's what we would inspect if we had a complaint. And we'll probably be getting daily calls, I'm sure, but that's why I wanna make it clear. I'm not going out every single day if, you know, we've already just were out there.
Right, sure.
But we did agree to go out there without a complaint and just try to monitor it and see what's going on. But we've worked with John Keane.
Good, okay.
He said he's gonna be out there, so we're gonna be coordinating with him and, you know...
Keep an eye on him.
Forest management is a conservation practice.
Absolutely.
That's, it's a, it's a misnomer, but a lot of people don't understand it.
Absolutely.
It's been expressed.
No, I, I feel encouraged to, I, I talked to him for quite a while this morning and, and, you know, hearing what he, it seems like that's...
I, I wish, and what Commissioner Claypool expressed at the Farm Bureau meeting, after I heard him speak, I was like, the, the public needs to hear what he just said.
Right, I know.
And I echo that directly exactly because I have him coming to our board meeting next because I want the, our board to hear exactly. Because I said, a lot of the stuff that he's done in the background and he's working with Akron, nobody knows that's happening.
Right.
But they need to know that's happening.
Yeah, that's it. There's a lot of misinformation being thrown around.
The ironic thing is, Dave Faber and I went down and met with Jessica, I'll, I'll mess her last name if I try and pronounce it superintendent. And we wanted, as an economic development thing, they're the largest landlord. We wanted to reach out. And so we ended up talking about that and, you know, they, people need to understand how concerned and dedicated she is to protecting the quality of the water that's going to the residences of the city of Akron. So when people say, oh, they're gonna mess up the quality of the water, it's like, that's the last thing they wanna do.
I mean, there's no doubt, there are some very bad, bad operations going on out there around our area. I mean, we're constantly battling it. But they have gone above and beyond what most have done that we have seen. So it's promising to see what they are committed to doing.
I mean, you see these slash and cut operations where you're just gonna cut the trees and then leave all the tops laying in the woods and all that kind of stuff. That's what people envision.
Right, and...
What they're doing is completely different.
They're going above and beyond is what...
Yeah, they're actually getting your top dollar for your cuts too. They, they secure the best bidders and, you know, they get you more. You know, a lot of times you're getting lowball offers to come onto your property and you're missing...
You're missing the opportunity, that's right. Well, in addition to that, they, it's ironic because they, they actually help you to create a future for your property. So they come in and they'll show you how to properly harvest. Well, if you really have woods there, first of all, it's healthier when you get some of these trees out of there. Secondly, you have some ongoing, you can cut on a regular basis. So, I mean, it was very educational to have the...
It makes your timber stand better timber stand for the future. We get a lot of, a lot of timber stands through the N R C S programs. They do grapevine removal because the grapevines will wipe out the woods quicker. They'll choke it out quicker than anything. So, I mean, there's so much management over there in the woods that most people think, I've gotta force them to leave it. It's all good. Well, it doesn't work that way. You think it would work that way, but...
It comes best. Skip and I, a couple of years ago, walked Meyer West in Chester Township. It's beautiful property, but it's totally overgrown. I mean, it's, you know, there's just so much congestion.
Way to get them in there and take a look at it because there's a lot of mature trees in there. And it's on property that we have Western Reserve Land Concerns to grab. And so we made it to...
Yeah, a lot of the forest, the forestry tax credits, I mean, technically, you're supposed to have a forestry management plan, but are those properties actually...
We could probably get some rent of revenue.
Proper forest management plans?
Right.
That's a big question. If that's really happening or not.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. We have, actually, I had spoke with you a few weeks ago, I believe. We had some people interested in the local agricultural easement purchase program through the state. One of the owners called me or got a call to me last week or a week before and he's canceled out. He's not interested, which is fine. So we only have one applicant. He is in, they're in Troy Township. It's a seventy-two acre parcel land and two parcels, actually. They are a vegetable grower. Wonderful soil, which we don't have all over the county. It's very premium, premium soil. So they have agreed to proceed with the program. And that little couple that is very interested in, they do not want this property to split. And that was one of their, it's really their primary reason for doing it. They said they don't wanna see it split in a, you know, fifty little parcels all over the place, so...
Yeah.
So I think, well, that's what they want. This is the program that works for you. So that is the application in front of you. If you wanted to see, I've got a map, if you want the one map, I can show you. See the proximity of this? Yeah, and you just... Just so you can see the proximity of it and... The property is in the yellow. Right on the, near the edge of the, southern edge of the county.
So, so, Colonel, this would be, um, this would be one of those scenarios? We would give them, what, like, two thousand? Or would there's no money exchanged at all in this?
The only money out of you is my time to do the program for them, put their application in. We don't actually outweigh any funds for this. The state has allotted Jagga County this year, if I remember right, how, it was a hundred and ninety-four or two hundred thousand for this round, since two thousand and eighteen. We, they would be eligible for a hundred and twelve thousand, so we're not gonna use all the money. So what they do with the extra money is they make it available to the rest of counties and the state who need extra funds. But this all comes from the state of Clean Ohio Farm and Preservation Office.
So, so then at this point in time, so they would put, they would put it into this, into the easement?
Yes.
That would be, so that there would be no, so they would be, they secure that piece in how it is and...
In agriculture.
In agriculture.
To keep it in agriculture, not self-divide it, one homestead or the parcel.
And then we would, we would, we would hold that easement within the county?
Correct. And then we would, once a year, we go out and do an inspection just to make sure it's still one, one farm on the property and is operating this farm. So that's just a yearly inspection.
So they, do they always have to be growing something or...
They can, I mean, it can be anything from what he's doing now, which is vegetables, to pay.
Yeah, okay.
But it has to be some type of, it has to remain in C A U V. So if it remains in C A U V, they have to be.
I see, okay.
We have to farm by a plan. As you go through this, I'd like to see the contract that you've been assigned with.
Sure. Yes, I actually can just email it to you and that's the difference.
Is there, I got a quick, are these properties normally paid off in full? I mean, is there, is there mortgages?
It varies something.
Does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
No, okay.
No, it doesn't matter. The one that we did for last year, we're still waiting on finishing up all this stuff on that property. That one is in Middlefield, I believe, Middlefield Park and Area. They actually had a loan on it, so, you know, they can choose to take that money and pay off their loan. This one, there is nothing on it.
I guess, I guess the only reason I ask and this is just hypothetical, if somebody were to, I don't know, you know, going to foreclose, you know, the property was transferred out of their hand, the bank took it back, would the, would the easements follow?
Yes.
It would?
Yes.
Yeah, perfectly true, wherever, whatever.
But even if it was the, even if it was like foreclosed on or something like that?
Yeah, it stays with it.
Huh, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, so part of the process is we need a resolution to submit the application or do the...
Second.
That's resolution eighteen S fifty-nine, by the way. To, to the extent permitted by law, authorizing participation in Ohio Local Agricultural Easement Purchase Program in support of the application from Donald B. Miller, and... I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Lyler?
Yes. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. May.
Good morning.
Morning. How are you?
I'm doing good. How about you?
Good, good.
Well, as you can see, number eight revised the job description for the Director Supervisor. To better reflect what the actual needs are, at least when the last revision was applied. I was fired at that job six or seven years ago now, so. And also, this revision is also part of the succession plan going forward for when the Director leaves the department and that job integrated to other positions there.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds good.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve the revised job description and regrade for the position of Supervisor Driver number twenty-two oh seven to reflect the duties of the job to effective April tenth, two thousand and eighteen. The Transit Department is requesting board approve the regrade of Joanna Santilli Supervisor Driver number twenty-two oh seven to grade thirteen step one at the rate of twenty-two dollars seventy-six cents per hour to be effective April sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Lyler?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Hi. Thank you. Oh, they're gonna raffle, huh? Okay. Is there chocolate in that? Yeah.
Wanted Jerry.
I'm worried for kill me.
This is just our bi-annual contract for lawn maintenance, grass cutting. When I bid for that, then if you're ready, we came back this, those two days ago. They'll be cutting the grass at all of our place water plants and water plants for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Well, it keeps snowing, we could save money on customers.
Yeah.
That's what we were, I joked with Adrian earlier, is, you know, by this time last year, we'd already done, we'd already had this contract in place and done three or four cuts.
Yeah. I think he does some snow farm for us too, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is he charged by cut or is he charged by, based on contracts?
It's a contract, but they're, they're required to do their own cuts in here, so this'll...
Don't make good on that.
Assumptions is, you know, because we're getting it this year, beginning of, at the end of spring, when, then, fall's gonna be later this year, so...
Yeah, right. Don't assume that.
Right, or you're gonna say, oh, that's not true.
Okay.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the next Q. A. service contract you're doing with the Ori Street Palace to perform lawn maintenance at the northern location. And southern location, we're from the Department of Water for a period of two years, two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. And the mountainous received thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars each year.
Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Lyler?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the one I got last week. So the Sheriff's Office is requesting board approve and authorize the President of the Board to act through the revised accounting forms, authorization form, and payable authorization form for the development of the building. At least that in my brow last week, we did the rest of the...
I see. Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Lyler?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Good.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you today?
Very good.
I'm mad. I've been watching snow behind you this whole time.
Yeah.
Just saying. Every three years, we re-up our participation agreement in Corsa, which is the county insurance, property liability insurance program where we all work together, self-insured, across a number of counties in the state. And this is our year to renew that. So that's number twelve, and then number thirteen is paying our bill for the year for our property liability insurance.
Um, how does that compare to last year?
It's a little lower, but not hugely, a couple thousand.
Okay.
You may see increases next year. The only reason I say that is, Corsa has hired a new appraisal company and they've actually, it's our year to be reappraised and they have started. They were here this past week. And they're drilling down to a much more granular level than the prior ones and it may result in increased values.
What about our claims experience? Could almost bring it on with the IT director?
I don't know how that's gonna affect us either. That could be ugly. We're hoping though to get back some taxpayers' money through our insurance and missions.
So you, you leaving, how does that indicate? So does that change the, the calculation at all? If we kept you, would it make our insurance lower?
Rates for all of them.
I'm thinking... It's, I'm just curious, have we always been in Corsa?
Since it started, pretty much. We were there pretty much...
Yeah, there's, how many? Seventy-seven, seventy-eight of the eighty-eight counties?
I don't know if it's that many.
It's, it's in the mid-seventies.
I thought it was sixty-six.
I, I thought it was, I thought it was over seventy. So the eighty-eight counties, the majority are in Corsa. Whereas in Sebco and healthcare, it's up to, I think, thirty-two or thirty-four.
Has, has anyone ever done a cost comparison to going out on your own?
We haven't done it recently, but again, it's, it's kind of the same logic as Sebco, is that you're self, you're in a self-insurance pool. If you're gonna go on the outside, you might get someone to buy the business by saying, hey, I can insure you for lower. But when the reality hits and you actually have the claims the next year, then counties that do that usually get whacked in a year or two. Someone buys the business, then they have to make it up.
Being a self-insurance pool means it's nonprofit, so they're not looking for profit. They're just looking to reasonably cover the costs. What we do see a lot is we get a lot of, they make me jump through some hoops and by jumping through the hoops, we get some money back. And then they also give back member equity by increasing coverage in different ways. Like they did a whole lot with cyber coverage about two years ago and drones are starting to be the big thing now. And right now, the coverage for it's pretty expensive, but we expect to see it drop because more and more people are doing it, so...
They, they subsidize, we have a maintenance database program called Facility Dude that has a procurement module. We're actually gonna go look at that because...
Oh, good.
Lake County has Facility Dude and they use that security module. We're actually gonna go see how that's done.
Good.
Tomorrow night. But that was, that, our purchase of Facility Dude was heavily subsidized by Corsa because their thought is, if you're properly maintaining your equipment in your buildings, it reduces the amount of claims you have.
Yeah.
So they help with that too.
Okay. Just curious.
I have talked with our local agent about that. Naturally assures us that we're saving a lot of money by being in Corsa. Now, I can ask him if he would toss it if he'd like, maybe he could break that down for you a little more. Just, just hanging out.
Okay.
Any reasons?
Yeah, I was just waiting.
Yeah, that's how.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve next Q. The two thousand and eighteen participation agreement with the County Risk Sharing Authority Incorporated, Corsa, for the period May first, two thousand and eighteen through April thirty, two thousand and twenty-one. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve the County Risk Sharing Authority Incorporated Insurance Program Renewal for the period May first, two thousand and eighteen through April thirty, two thousand and nineteen, and further authorize the payment of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand sixty-three dollars.
Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Lyler?
Yes. Hi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, we're going to, we're gonna go into executive session to do this, but I guess prior to that, let's go ahead and, we've got a...
One, three and a fourteen, we have two.
Yeah, we have one more. Okay.
I just have to acknowledge the receipt of the check from Hawthorne Aurora Properties for additional earnest money for the three hundred and seventy-one linear feed-to-stream credits that he purchased today on, obviously, eighteen, two thousand and seventeen. Under the purchase agreement.
And the check was an amount of?
Two thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Do we have a motion? Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Lyler?
Yes. Hi.
Do you wanna execute that, that letter?
Oh, yeah.
This is what you're saying?
Yeah.
This is the revised one? Yeah, 'cause we corrected it.
So Dave, do you wanna give a quick rundown on, on this letter?
Well, we were, we were sent, the juvenile probate court applied for, for legal representation in their action or potential action that the auditor might take against their hiring of an attorney. And so the juvenile probate court, to defend their interests, applied to the Court of Common Pleas and Judge Burke approved their seeking attorney. And we've got a letter from Rhodes and Andrus, like a letter of, you have to document what's the actual terminology. Anyway, it's a, it's a request the board sign off and that would be the final step for them to be formally engaged with Jagga County. And so, in, based on our conversations with our counsel, this is a letter of response. It's basically acknowledging the court's rights and, and understanding their rationale for wanting to seek representation, but asking that they look at the timing of actually doing the action to coincide with whether or not the prosecutor ultimately ends up taking the action because apparently the prosecutor has not filed any action yet. That would make it mandatory that the attorney defending the court would have to start working and incurring billable hours on behalf of the county. The other thing we're asking for is them to look at their rate and, in light of what other attorneys charge for work with public sector entities and perhaps consider offering us a lower... and perhaps consider offering us a lower rate.
Okay.
You didn't email this one for some time? Who did you?
Uh, no, it's just a couple minor word changes, but I will review it real quick before we sign it, so.
Yep. Is there three of them here, did you sign these?
Yes.
To take the actions off.
So the Commissioner's Office is requesting the board approve and execute a letter from Roethlisberger and Andrews, agreement on retention agreement for legal representation for justice.
Do we have a motion or do you wanna read it?
I'm gonna read it real quick, if you don't mind, just work quick.
Okay, so. Second.
Mr. Claypool? Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Claypool?
Hi.
Okay. Okay. So for number 15, uh, the Commissioner's Office is requesting a board movement to executive session for the purpose, purpose of discussing the employment and compensation of a public employee in the auditor's office. And, uh, present would be, um, all three of the Commissioners, Dave, Jerry.
Adrian, too, I'd like to invite.
Adrian.
Yeah.
And whoever else.
And then Chuck and, uh, Ron. Okay. Sounds good.
So, I have a motion.
Second.
Mr. Claypool?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Just go back.
Hi.
One there. I see it's done.
Do you want the dollar amount?
Yeah. If, if that's accurate.
Is that, is that, is that?
Accurate?
Yeah, it came right from him. Okay, all right.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, I'll reply back to a, a fixed amount, so.
Yep.
He's off, it's his issue.
Yep.
Okay.
We're gonna make adjustments, this is, we need, if, if this is what I came up with.
Yep.
The auditor's office is requesting the board approve coverage of 90% pickup of cover, coverage for a potential new employee in the DIT department in the amount of $2,340 pursuant to ORC 305.171.
So, second.
Commissioner Claypool?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Martin?
Yes. Hi.
Significant.
Okay. So to the net, uh, we've got, uh, let's see here. Support revisions on Monday, ADP on, uh, the 23rd also. And then Tuesday we'll be back. For all this excitement again.
I, I will be here Tuesday.
Oh, you won't?
Ronald comes dead.
Yeah. You having fun yet?
Yeah, I'm having a lot of fun.
Yeah.
At least they know you for that.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, we, we know you.
Frankly, it's the calls that.
That's what worries me.
You're still smiling, so.
That's a good sign.
That's right.
And you have hair.
Which is like before and aftershot.
Yeah, that's right.
So with that, motion to adjourn. So move.